Good.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. We will call to order the City of Quinnons Board of Alman meeting. For December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please stand to plug in the duty.
I plan to take this to the right. But we have a states of America. To the Republic, for which stands one makes you. And God, in this all, we're leaving any justice for all.
Call roll please.
Call the man, the man, the man.
Yep.
Alman person.
Here.
Alman cell phone.
Here.
Alman lip one.
Here.
Lip four.
Here. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting, proper posted. There's no changes to the agenda, I'll pay your motion to approve the agenda. We do. We have an amendment to the agenda.
Oh, we just need to state that the Resolution twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four, twenty-two is added today. And that was just because it was, it was last minute.
I bring it to the.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt. We're headed. Jay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Both intended to prove. Citizen comments? Do you have any comments?
I have.
What?
You're up. I should go an hour later. Hi, my name is Matt Coleman. Live at, uh, Vine Gate Crescent Avenue. Um, reason that I'm at the meeting tonight is that I have a concern about the approach to my driveway since the sidewalk was installed, all I do like the sidewalk. Of the main reason that purchase that property is for the shop that is on it. And I'm here to let you find what kind of goods will be coming to some of the access of vehicles that you will have to access the shop. So the type of resolution we may be able to come up with.
Is the, uh, I know they redid the apron for your driveway.
Yes, sir.
Uh. I was waiting to hear from the engineering company. The degree of slope before and the degree of slope after.
So I believe twelve was in the plan and some ADA compliance, I believe it's right at eleven, but access and compliance will be ADA is not really my concern for the approach. Some of the equipment I recently had contracted, the chimney chaise covered on, they had parked across the street, but they were afraid they would track. Some of the equipment, uh, specifics of it had like six feet of overhang from the rear ass, we were pulling six inches of clearance. Uh, the chimney chaise vehicle had seven feet of overhang, but we're all fourteen inches of height at the bumper. And there was no clearance ever there in the back. Don't know when I approached him, met with Jeff Jordan this afternoon, he thought we'd straighten it out, but we would be probably replace the four panels going up to would be new to a B B. Who wants to lessen that gradient.
Did we know for sure that it's been a drag?
Not a hundred percent. I'm trying to get the equipment set up, so much as travel, I haven't had an opportunity to assess. What's the grade that they did in store? Believe it's eleven degrees, but.
Nope. That changed the existing slab, though.
At all. The existing slab is still there, it's just it has a real depressive approach to. For the committee, I can try to get a trailer, Jeff said Jeff Jordan was, uh, Harvey Wagner, so that he would like to be present. I might get him to be present as well.
Schedule that meeting with him, or?
We met this afternoon, got out of town till first next week, but I'm afraid that won't work with my. If I knew the venue of the approach and stuff, that's something that I'll do, but I just want to be ready to concern before we get too far away from completion of a project. This is a concern. Um, I know in the, before it was finished, I had approached the Harvey Wagner. So to get the angle that they needed to, they may have to go up into that next panel. I expressed that I would prefer that they did, and I realized that there were budgetary time constraints, but essentially I didn't have the problem project. Project, but now I'm like, you could help me able to access the pieces of building.
Uh. I would like to, like to, I'd like to see the result, just some kind of video. Well, I'm not saying I have to physically see it, but I, I would like to at least drive a slope and see if it is, it is a problem. And, uh, we'll, we'll prepare.
Alman person with next floor, I can buy that over on the weekend.
Sure.
I have access to the equipment. That, uh, yeah. I'm in the slawber. Express that before we get too far away from.
Hey, your, your concern is noted, and we will take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, too. Okay, we have a consent agenda, Board of Alman regular meeting minutes from November the twentieth. The bills list from November sixteenth to November twenty-ninth. Comments, questions, all units? Now I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda, a second. On favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. We will now open a public hearing for the twenty twenty-five budget. Dave? Do you think so?
Uh. The purpose of this hearing is to. This is kind of a public, uh, vote about the twenty-five budget. Proposed budget has been available for public, uh, function viewing for the last couple of weeks, uh, I think on the city's website. City hall. This budget is in accordance with state and city, uh, state statute code, which, uh, among other things, provides that the budget is balanced, meaning that revenues, whatever money is left over at the end of this year, uh, cannot be, uh, less than, uh, than the expenditure proposed. Expenditures, uh, in this budget and revenues, uh, also, according to state law, shows half years actual forecasted amounts, those that adhere to will be actual amounts for years twenty, twenty, two thousand, point three are included in the proposed budget and the forecasted amounts for this year and the budget amounts for next year are included in the budget, all, uh, words that state law. Uh, the budget includes all rep, uh, I'm sorry, all funds of the city, the five, uh, funds of the city includes, um, the debt service payments that are required, uh, the financing agreements, and also includes the capital improvement. Uh, we reviewed the budget in detail at the, uh, November the twentieth. Budget, uh, forecast, a total of one million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred dollars revenue, the sliding increase of one point four percent from, uh, from the projected two thousand, twenty-four total. Uh, as we all know, sales tax is the big number, there are two percent of the total revenue. Sales tax, uh, the next, uh, significant, uh, revenue source is from the, the business license. Uh. With all the revenue, all funds, the five funds, we, the expenditure, on the expenditure side, uh, the expenditures of one million, uh, five hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-six, uh, dollars is a, a six point four percent decline from forecast spent in two thousand, twenty-four. A reason for the decline is we're going to spend less in capital improvements than keep out of the twenty-four. Uh, we have, we have reorganized the budget in some way in the expenditure side by providing for, uh, more, uh, defined cost vendors or activities, uh, and we've discussed those that will happen. Those are all included, uh, the, the, there are a couple of transfers included in the budgets. We do project fund balance of about two point two million, uh, of all funds at the end of, uh, two thousand, twenty-five base level, it's like, yeah. Want any more details for the, for that plan? But again, it, it is for the public, uh, public's opportunity, uh, to comment on budget if anything, yes, but.
They have any commenters on YouTube? Nothing, so.
Okay.
No.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Report on committee, please report, option warrior.
All right, for the month of November, we had forty-two radio calls, hundred and thirty-nine self-initiated, generated eleven reports, seventeen traffic stops, we had one misdemeanor arrest, which are all prosecuted. Uh, seven auto crashes and a one point one Big Ben, two Big Ben Merrick Station on the paper, however, those two, there was only one on Merrick Station, the other one was actually at the Shuns Park, but it coded as Merrick Station, so. And then Crescent Avenue and Valid School Road, that was just a school bus, cutting the curb too close for looking at other cars. Uh, we had one alcohol theft from the Waterings and a love eight point seven two hours of a bike. Any questions?
Too much short time this.
No, especially, oh, one more thing I wanted to bring up, I, uh, put on the, on your spots, the invitations you see, and I don't have the, the precincts in this party, which is same day as something else going on this year, but, uh, some, something, uh, but that's during the day, and of course, everybody's welcome, what mess we're just living on, right now, and interviews.
So they're combining West County this year?
This year we are, okay. I'm not privy to that conversation, but that's what we're doing, so I don't know why it's that combined, but it seems to be a trend that a lot of the precincts are combining with other communities. And then a blackjack in the first precinct, and what else this year?
The comment that I'd like to make, uh. I haven't been noticing. Robbing patrol in the neighborhoods.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering if they're kind of skipping the neighborhoods and doing neighborhoods. Anybody else notice? Lack of roving patrols?
Um, I, I just feel my camera has, has affect any, anything of it's, it's not, not the best camera in town either, so. I'll look into it.
We, you know, we used to see them going back road into the cemetery.
Yes.
Every once in a while you see them going down, I haven't seen one in a long time. Just.
If you check on that night.
Yeah.
Close the two tons every. You know.
Yeah. So if you could check the roaming.
I would take it, school room, I know the dedicated part is, it's kind of different on that activity schedule, so I will look into it, enable it, bring it up, we say, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, no old business, new business, we have bill number twenty-four dash nineteen. Jeff, please.
Bill number approved, four dash nineteen, and ordinance approving and adopting a budget for twenty twenty-five this year.
Comments or discussion? Well, read a section.
Bill number twenty-four dash nineteen, and ordinance approving and adopting a budget for twenty twenty-five this year.
Motion to approve bill twenty-four dash nineteen. Motion to approve bill twenty-four dash nineteen.
Okay.
Call roll please.
Call the man, the man. My person?
Yes.
And lip one?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah. Bill number twenty-four dash nineteen, the numbers twenty-four dash nineteen by now in store.
Actually, that's.
Yeah, it's in there. Maybe it's not in your.
Not in your problem. Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty is the resolution approving certain recurring financial obligations of the city for thirteen month period, number twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-five. It's just those, um, like auto debit that you do every year, so the things that are on my, it's not totally good. The whole list.
Recurring.
Recurring, it's like, correct. Months.
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty. So moved. Second. On favor?
Aye, aye.
Both. Will adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty by now. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Uh, recognition approving an agreement with George Butler Associates, Inc., who provide engineering and design and consulting services to the city of Quinnons. Yes, for the S T P, T S D.
S T P grant.
The park grant?
Merrick.
It's for Merrick Station, S T P or and or T V P grant, depending on which one we decide to go after.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Will adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one now in store.
Okay.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Resolution approving payment to Bartolino's Quinones with the city of Quinnones Volunteer Appreciation Dinner.
We, uh, we were notified just this week.
Um, I think just late, late last week, around Thanksgiving.
Last week? That they were imposing a minimum on us for the space that we are asking for, based on the, they have been tracking your business, and obviously they're doing very well, because the minimum is based on what they typically will generate at space while we're there. So they're asking for a minimum of fifty-five hundred, what do you guess? Since that exceeded our five thousand cap for us to approve without board approval, we need a resolution to allow to approve that. Motion to adopt twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Both. Will adopt twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. It's a. For business practice to pose that, the last minute. Uh, I have had, we have had several levels of that in conversation. Do you understand? Okay, no discussion items, attorney's report? Hello, board today? City clerk, report.
So candidate filing for the, um, we actually have four more open positions for the April election, so two, um, two-year terms for ultimate large, one, one-year term, and then the local term, that opens on December the tenth. Accedents are available for those who want to run in my office, and they are, as we approved, um, earlier this year, they'll be submitted at the point of election to office. They will take care of our candidate filing for us and make a list and answer all the questions people have about personal finance, disclosure, and all that stuff.
We did send out the notification.
We did, yes, it's been published in the Northwest County, and it's gone out through our email list, posted, so.
There's your chance.
It's out there, if you want to run for office, so you have through December thirty-first at five P M, and it is, uh, the order on the ballot, it's first come, first served. So she did tell me, if you want to be first on the ballot, you want to go up there on the day that it opens, they will have a lottery, if more than one person shows up on day one to say who is first on the ballot, so. Everybody up there, December tenth, day A, sure. Um, the calendar photos and the dates and all of Dennis' very witty captions have been sent over to Two Creative to make our twenty twenty-five calendar, and I actually just got the proof from her late this afternoon, so I will look over that and give her the approval to get those in the works. Uh, we did have our annual playground safety inspections, and we have Playground Guardian, who has done this, apparently be signed contract in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two to inspect the playground in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Done in twenty-two, not completed in twenty-three, now we've done it again in twenty-four. So they're supposed to be sending me the final report, uh, later this week or early next week, like that. Um, I did talk with Carlos from Expert Exteriors about the roof claim that we have in process. Um, he did tell me that, um, he did not, and I was under the impression, maybe you guys feel differently about it, but, um, based on what he told us, that he had found damage in the T P O flat membrane roof, but when I talked to him last week, he said he actually had not found any damage in the T P O membrane roof, so.
I thought he did. Awesome.
Maybe that is what he said, but he said he would need to, so I was putting him in touch with Jared, who is our adjuster from Selective Insurance, so that they could discuss what would be covered, um, and he would like to come back out and, um, in his words, find damage in the T P O roof that he can go back to the adjuster with. So I told him that I would discuss that, if you guys, let you discuss, um, I will say he is the only one out of all the roofers that were here to evaluate city hall roof that even mentioned the T P O roof or any damage to it or noted any damage to it, so. I will let you discuss that, if you want, if anybody has comments, thoughts, if we want to continue to inform with him to have him find damage in the roof, and then go back for insurance, or? How would you like me to proceed?
So you're gonna keep up with the adjuster, so?
He would like to come back on his own. And then present that damage, whatever he finds, to the adjuster after the fact.
So the adjuster would verify it?
I, yes, my assumption, or my, from my understanding, I should say, not my assumption, is that the two of them will discuss what damages he found, what damages they have found, they have also sent us a full report of what they consider to be damages, and then they will work it out between the two of them, what will be covered and what will not be covered. So I think in the original, um, estimate that Expert Exteriors gave us, they were assuming that we were paying for this completely on our own. Instead of filing a claim. Though we have always. This has always been claimed from the beginning, but I think that he was under the impression that we would just be paying for it out of pocket, which is why he included the T P O roof initially, rather than having to go through our insurance.
Well, the way, the way this typically works, that our adjuster comes up, surveys the damage. Then we select a roofer. And the roofer works with the adjuster. So I'm not sure why he was going on this cash-only basis, but it's not the process.
Well, we, we can still move forward with him, um, but I guess my, my reservation was that he was the only one who brought up any issues with the T P O roof, um, and none of the other roofers had, and I don't know, I could tell him, that's fine, he can come back and assess the T P O roof, and then let him talk to the adjuster, like you said, and they can work it out.
Could we have another?
From there.
Could we have one of the roofers who came out, have them come back, see if they can find any damage?
Certainly. I mean. I think that they talked about roof, air conditioning units, they suspected about the brain, but if they could see the membrane underneath, right? That was the portion that was in contention, I think, that they couldn't see underneath that, that portion that has legs, I guess. Said he had some equipment that he could lift, and the A C is up, but it's possible it's not strong enough to do that, so I might have to get a drop on the brain.
Thought those units were shielded.
I think it was the membrane underneath that they were concerned about, there wouldn't be a membrane, we, we raised those units, they didn't bring that, she didn't help, they were going to hurt. Then the unit suspended on the top of the curb, there's no other way to see it. Like, this is, this is a day we're watching, I know we did that H D A C guy come up. They go, look, he said there was no physical damage to the A C units. I want to check to see if they did. So questions, what's underneath the shields? Or is it? Well, I don't know. I understand, yes. They were meeting, reviewing meetings. Just, oh, if you do this, it's not that. You're saying it probably isn't necessary to lift that equipment wholly if they're tired. T P O roof needs to be replaced. Then you have to lift them so they can get that T P O up under. Wrap over that curb. But if there's a couple of spots, they should be able to seal that. If there's a puncture here.
Have we asked our engineer?
Yeah, we went.
We asked our engineers, and people who said, well, there's something, and I was just, like, I don't know why we're yet.
I don't know.
About a T P O roof, or us, whatever, or whatever.
I don't either.
What he said made sense, but I'm not on my roof, and I'm not a roofer. But we had to be able to say whether or not, everything that he was saying that made sense, the problem with the roof, had to do with the fact that curbing isn't at level with the other, so this has to be raised, so this all comes off, so we don't have water pooling, freezing, and very crappy. That was my understanding of what he was describing. That's me, not a roofer, not an engineer, don't even know what T P O stands for, so I think we should be asking our engineers. He did have. Out to evaluate, and they did give us a bit, they were, um, the one that was still lowest bid. Sure. So they were here at least to evaluate the roof, and other ones that we got, they did not mention the T P O, the quote was only for the damage she was. Okay. Which is why it was so low.
Think Lisa, you're, you're asking for our engineers, too.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking. Okay.
Yeah, they, they actually had some oversight, they did.
Maybe they oversaw the fire protection, so, I mean, my other concern from the standpoint of knowing what flat roof steel is, again, that is a recurring. From the standpoint of knowing what flat roofs do is, again, that is a river. Um, is that that problem, that edge problem that happens is a very common problem. Now, I feel like his solution is way above what we need, right? So if my engineers came out and said, no, we could do this, or we could do this, or we could do that. All of these things would create the same solution for way less money. I'm all for doing that, right? Because I, I'm not saying I think that solution is best, but I do believe that flat roofs create problems. And if what we have is a pooling problem because of some sort of. What we really have. Right, settling, is the word I'm going to use, not knowing what I'm even saying there. If that's what we have, I'd rather our engineers got in there now than ten years from now when the lawyers come. Because I, I sit underneath flat roofs kind of for the last twenty years now, since I worked on them. And it is a problem on a regular basis. Like his question is, do we want to pursue that now as part of this scale plan or is that something that we should? No, I would. Keep in mind and because the, the likelihood that our insurance is going to cover that, knowing that it's probably not hail damage is. Right, right. Yeah, but even if we do it, that's it, like, I think we could just persuade our, all of our, our engineers get up there and say, no, this isn't a problem. Or here's a solution, and then while a roofer is doing the fixes that have to do with that, that they can fix this for less. Right? Because I think that that solution is what makes the most sense long-term. Is that, yes, while we're already up on the roof, they have to move anything, maybe do anything, all that stuff could be done at the same time. That's a safe, you know, than not, you know, putting something towards it. But I don't think that we necessarily have to be replacing the entirety of the roof either, right? Like that seems extreme to me for what, you know, is likely up there. But I do know that the flat may have of these roofs is a problem. And that the longer you let that settle and happen, the bigger a problem it is, the more expensive than it becomes. Because you wind up with internal.
Basically talking about this roof.
I don't know. Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Like I said, if you're T P O skin. So, you know, like if, if they give us standard approval for a few hundred dollars, to me, that would make it easier for us than do either just the one. And they say, these are, that's gravy. Which they can say, I don't know. You know, anybody can say anything that. Okay, so you want me to go back to Carlos and say we would like an opinion from our home engineering? With what you've told us about the flat roof before we can proceed with. That's reasonable, I mean, yeah, that's just my thought, but.
I agree. I mean, he may know what he's talking about. I think we can totally one hundred percent trust that. We need to have our own, our own cells, but we want those things to be long-term.
Exactly, that's, that's my view of that. Yes, we'll get the, I mean, anybody can allow probably do whatever the, oh, the solution that they gave us is the one that makes sense. But if there is a longer term problem sitting up there, then I'd rather know about it now, even if all that we think you don't land. Yeah, you know, so I feel like now is the time because it makes more sense to me that you could just fix these pieces, but then are in the middle of the round of shit. Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, you know, all right. I will let them know that we wanted an area review and. Okay, moving on. So meeting dates for January, uh, Russ and I talked about this briefly. The first meeting of January is supposed to be on the first, January first. Not good, I'm sure for anyone. So.
Will school it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll be busy probably, or maybe just like snapping, I don't know. Yeah. Um, so we talked about just canceling the first meeting and only having one meeting in January on the fifteenth, which would have been our second. So rather than trying to move them both, it's for us and I will both be gone on the twenty-second of January, so. Yeah. Okay, so everybody good with that? Sure. Just one meeting in January on January fifteenth, yes.
And if we need a special.
Right. Sure, yeah. Okay, so a quick events update, um, we were talking to um, our fireworks contractor about potential rain dates. So with the day that uh, Fourth of July falls on next year, we have two options. So um, either Saturday, July twelfth, which is pretty far away from the third. Or Sunday, July sixth as a rain date, because Fourth, third of July is on Friday, so that kind of puts us. So we, I wanted to ask board's opinions on which one that they would prefer.
Third is on Thursday.
What, third is on Thursday, yeah, because the fourth is on a Friday, so he couldn't do it on the fourth. He has shows on Saturday, already booked, so Sunday, the sixth would be the earliest. Correct, yes. Sunday, the sixth would be the earliest. He really, he was recommending the twelfth, but I just felt like that's really far away from the fourth. And, you know, people that already are not fans of fireworks would really not like that, that far away, but your decision. Yeah, the only question that I have is, I don't know why it was a pity and I have a problem with us having it on Sunday.
Yeah, yes.
We have to get that okay.
That would be a problem.
Yeah, and he did offer, you know, another day during the week. But I know that's tricky for everybody, picking a day during the week. He said, you know, that fall in the week could be an option, but. I wouldn't do this as soon as Monday, and you know, I like Sunday, but I just remember that the church did not like this.
I think uh, I would prefer the Sunday if we.
Yeah.
If it's okay to the church.
Okay, right, I can, I can reach out to them. It might be different people there, you know what I mean?
Yeah. If it's a rain out, we won't have the same.
Sue for Sunday the sixth if that works, okay. Um, updates on the projects, um, we talked a little bit about the Crescent project, um, everything is essentially complete. We have, I did talk today for the final um, kind of walkthrough with B F A this afternoon. So there is a few things on the punch list um, for the contractor to do little like cleanup items, things like that, so we'll be looking through that with them. Um, I did finally hope everybody can come Friday, December the sixth at eleven A M. So we're running. I know it's tricky and I have moved in a million times, but we're going to just go with that and hope that people show up.
Are you coming?
Um, I don't know yet, I haven't told him yet, but I'm sure we will try to. So that is the tentative, or not tentative, that is the day, I'm not moving them anymore. And it's going to be cold, but hopefully not unbearable cold, so we'll just do a quick.
Bring your trailers and we'll drive up the street.
Yeah, there you go. So um, I did talk to Tiffany about the Bolley Lane entrance. They are working on this for documents, so we will have those to go out um, either by the end of this. End of this month or if not, first of January, so we want to be sure to get on schedules for that by the spring. Um, and then, yeah, I talked to Chris already at G B A about the uh, S T P grant. He said just as soon as he gets approval, they'll get right on that because I know the deadline is February. Um, I did get last minute cost estimates from Boss about the park lighting. So they have um, estimated twenty-five thousand three hundred for the first half of the boring that would be required. So um, they did say they could get it done by the end of the year, we looked quickly on it, but I did explain that this was our last meeting essentially for this month. So we, a couple of things we can do, we can schedule a special meeting in a week or two to talk more specifically about it. Um, move on to more information. I am a little bit hesitant to move super quickly on it just because they have not given us a whole cost estimate for everything they want to do. While they've given us this twenty-five thousand for the first half of the boring, which would essentially just be um. I've got the pictures in here so if you want to see them.
They put the electricity in place and fixing.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's even, if it's any more than just running the conduit, extremely conduit under all these and that's it. So I think. Um, yeah, it was just for the partial, it was basically just from the um, like where the trash enclosures are down to the first. Okay, so from hole number one, which is up there at the top of the service access road, down to a hole three. That's it, twenty-five thousand dollars. Do that, approximately four hundred and seventy-five feet according to Google, Google measurements. Yeah, so it would be, yeah, underneath. So I leave that up to the board if you'd like to have another meeting to discuss, or you want to have pump the brakes on this until after the first of the year, you guys can run it. Well, the only reason I think really we were kind of pushing on it was because we have money and budget for this year to spend on it, but. Think we can.
Rather, rather than, rather than have the money and spend it, make the wrong decision. Yeah, we could use more detail on, you know, on boring, you know, this.
Yeah.
Versus laying the conduit off. I don't, I'd bring it, that, that seems a little excessive, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I asked. Yeah, I asked for some more detail. This was the initial um, scope that they sent me, so just. Boring from the main entrance wall and make the bed be roughly half. So in order to accomplish, and this, this is the layout that was given to them, this is the one that our committee worked on, had been working on, so this is. This is that initial to try to make, make all of those light poles happen. But again, we don't have, I, I would have liked to have seen more full scope about how much this entire project is going to cost before we jump in and do the first. And, and it may be that if they get this boring done, we can have anyone else complete the rest of the project, I don't know, but. I have something on the surface.
Why don't you tell them that you'd like to see the full scope?
Okay.
Yeah, we take, we take step one and then step two comes in on electric. Oh my God.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then for the rest of the whole, we'd like to know if that's the source. Electricity at number three.
Yeah.
For the rest of the park.
Yeah.
But they have to start somewhere.
Yeah, they are going to have to do more boring, because he said it would be the first half essentially of the boring, so then the second half, what I would assume would be. Another twenty-five thousand to continue it further. Okay, well, I can go back to them and just say we would like some more detail about the project.
Oh, they, we're talking about this boring.
Okay, um, and then the last thing is that we did get our ten thousand dollar reimbursement from the National League. Yes, Pat Kelly came and dropped it off, which is very nice, I was in the office at that time and it goes out with B F A. Yeah, we dropped off our check, yeah. So B F A is ready to move Jennifer, the grant writer, she's ready to move on that after the first of the year to get that final application done, so. That's all I have. Any questions? Like it's always a lot, I'm sorry. Oh, and here's the press release, I didn't put in here and I don't, would you read it, but I wanted to read it, I'm sending out about uh, first syndrome. That's it.
How in April, we, we for, because just, no, this is just for me on bills list. I will be recalling a couple of people so that we can get as much of our billing for twenty twenty-four complete. Um, like around the twenty-seven.
Oh, yeah, the last, the last minute bill.
Black, but just, just to come up inside of the house so that I can get a little bit.
Yeah, I'm hearing, I'll have to. After the six.
But.
Okay, well, I want to encourage, encourage everybody to get that paperwork in for our election. I mean, encourage any of the residents out there that have that dream to want to be on this board, get their paperwork in. I think I have anything else. Joe. Yeah. Dennis.
As far as the rescheduling of the fireworks, but also taking into consideration. That's true.
Hang on. Any final citizen comments? Anything on?
Nope, thanks, but under Tosi, he's been on the rise.
Wondering about it. Okay, we have a need for closed session tonight, so I want to make a motion. Pursuant, yes, please. Congratulations.
We need some laugh.
Uh, pursuant to section six-ten point zero-two-one. Our ex-bonds is subject to a motion that we made in the balance of the football and the court, such a meeting for the purpose of dealing with matters herein. Pollen, section six-ten with zero-two-one-three hiring fire and disbanding. Including employees and personal information about employees discussed and recorded. And section six-ten point zero-two-one-thirteen, eventually, high old personnel records, police ratings. Records pertaining to employees' rap.
There was second. Okay, a roll please.
Please.
Yes.
On the cell phone.
Yes.
On the landmark.
Yes. Okay, we will now go into closed session, go into the. Thank you for coming, thank you very much. Want to get your paperwork in?